I'll bring the Butte Silver Bow Council Commissioners Committee of the Whole Meeting to order for Wednesday, November 12th, 2025. Can we please have a roll call?
One presiding, eight present, three absent.
Thank you. Please let the record reflect. Commissioner Fisher, Anderson and Fisher are gone for tonight's meeting. Mankins is gone for tonight's meeting. Commissioner Walker, would you please lead us in the prayer and the pledge?
Almighty God, we in glory looking upon us and at us this night, we make decisions which are right to the effect, our community do so, direct our thoughts, words and deeds so that we can be best served and most sensitive.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on tonight's agenda is any public comment on any items that are on tonight's agenda. This is the opportunity for a member of the public to get up and speak on any items that's on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to, please come up to the podium and just state your name and address for the record and which communication you're talking about. Oh, sorry, Dan. On the bottom, there's a button. Right there. You're good.
Can you hear me? Oh, there we go.
Yep.
My name's Dan O'Neal, 2085 Beacon Road, here on the Business Development Center item. Just for clarification, I'm not related to Josh O'Neal, and I think I can say I don't know who anybody on this board is. So as a tenant of the Business Development Center, I want to get some questions answered, although I can't speak for other tenants. I can say there's been almost no communication from Butte Silver Bow regarding the sale or disposal. Last thing I understood was that the council had approved the building to be posted for sale, and I was expecting further information to be made available. As a tenant, I was not given any written information regarding the sale, or any information regarding an opportunity to purchase through a bid or auction process, excuse me. I've appeared before this body before regarding the public notification system for when bids are added to the county RFP page. I've signed up multiple times, so either the system doesn't work, or somebody in the system has removed my information. I can, I only came to find out about tonight's hearing because the letter number 2025-518 was posted on the main office door this past Monday. Given that the letter was dated and received on October 20th, it seems to go along with my concerns it was not posted until 11:10, 2025. I'm partly calling on some awareness and asking for information that may be relevant and legally required to be disclosed as part of a real property sale in Montana. And that information is, two to three years ago, an architecture and engineering company was hired to perform an assessment on the BDC building. If I'm not mistaken, it was to look at the cost of upgrading the windows in the building and to provide soil stabilization for part of the building that is subsiding. I believe the results were going to be used in a grant application for structural improvements and window replacement. So my question is, were the results of that architectural and engineering analysis published or presented to the commissioners, or more importantly in this case, were they disclosed as part of the RFP? I have to apologize because I was earning a Master of Architecture from Arizona State University during that time, so I was gone for two to three weeks at a time during the school year and may have missed that report, or it was returned when Sherry, or after Sherry had retired. Then my concern with the process was the RFP provided no information about a bid submission or auction format, nor does it provide any guidance or matrix on how the proposal will be scored for determination on the award of the proposal. Due to that, I could not seriously consider investing the time in preparing a proposal when I do not know if the award will be based on merit, intent, or means to invest. And I would only ask that the county attorney look at two codes annotated, 784201 number 3 and 722756. When these, this proposal is presented to you and make sure that it meets the legal requirements the state has set forth regarding county selling property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neal. Any other member of the public that would like to speak on any item that's on tonight's agenda? Okay, please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record and which communication you want to talk about.
Hello, my name is Louis Pazanti. My address is 116105 Fleece Road. I would like to discuss the new proposal for the data center proposed to be built out in the rural area of the Tiffett. Is that correct? Montana Connections. So I don't know if I could pass this out to you guys?
Mr. Pazanti, just so you know, this is just for public comment, so the council can't go back and forth on answering questions. It's just for you to get up and speak on what you want. But if you do want to pass those around, you can give them to Barb, and she will, she will get it to the commissioners.
So one thing that was brought to my attention, the people of Buxton do not feel that they've been adequately notified about what is going on with the build of this building, the footprint of it, where it's going to be located. It was brought to my attention, someone said, well, read the paper. Well, a lot of us do not get the paper anymore. But all of us get the mail. So that was one of our concerns and all my neighbors' concerns is that we were not accurately notified of what the building was going to be, how big it's going to be. There are several things that we are concerned about with this building, the devaluing of our property. We want to know a noise assessment, the lights, what kind of lights are going to be around this building? Are we possibly building in the middle of the Butte Airport with runway lights everywhere? This is my house that I'm just constructing right now that I handed out to you guys, and it could possibly be less than 200 yards from the building site of this new data center. So obviously, I'm fairly concerned about this. The other questions we have is, has there been an environmental impact assessment done, a documented one? Has there a noise assessment been done on these facilities that has a baseline that we can refer back to, something that will protect us, that, you know, if we're sitting in our home and we can't go to sleep at night because of the adjacent noise that is going on from this facility? The other question we have is, has there been a realtor assessment done? I mean, how much is this new building going to devalue our property? And we're very concerned about that. Anyway, those are the concerns that we have, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Pazani. Any other member of the public that would like to comment on any item that's on tonight's agenda? Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Evan Barrett. I reside at 807 West Silver Street in Butte, and I'm here to briefly address Communication Number 546, which is about the data center. And back in April, April 16th, I appeared before you at the beginning of the meeting when we first heard and had a presentation on the data center by, I think it was Sabi. I don't think that's the name they were using at the time, but, and I spoke out and said, you know, this sounds really good, and I find it intriguing, but I'm not sure. It seems to me that we're kind of trying to rush this thing a little bit, and we're not sure of what the impacts are going to be on Butte and on the citizens of Butte and the citizens of Montana. And I kind of concluded by urging, let's, let's not rush. Let's not rush. Well, frankly, you rushed. It didn't take you any time to sell 600 acres of land, which I don't think should have been sold. And though there's a clawback provision, I believe, in the contract, it's a clawback that allows the company to get out of a deal, but I don't think the clawback allows the county to get out of the deal if a deal is not favorable. I still find it intriguing. I'm not sure about it all. But I do have concerns for a number of things. The speed is one concern. Water, I think we have inconsistency in the statements about water. One, the company saying they don't really need any, and now they're talking about 3 million gallons a day. So that needs to be fleshed out a bit. The power, assurances that the power and the power line and all that is needed for this, which is massive, quadrupling the size of the amount of power being developed in Montana, you know, it's going to be done, is it going to be done in a way that does not negatively impact your power bill, my power bill, the county's power bill? That's who we need to be standing up for. And we don't have those assurances at this particular point. Also, the taxes. Now, the taxes are low, and that's okay. You know, a lot of these taxes that were put together, I put together a lot of these tax packages for the state of Montana, given a good tax break for a company and, and an industry. The taxes are low, but we, we have, I think, a misconception of the tax situation and what can be done with the taxes out in the community. And so that concerns me too. And I'm going to briefly address that right here for a second. And I might come back and talk about water with you at another meeting, or maybe talk about the power at another meeting. And I hope I'm just trying to offer some of my expertise and experience in this stuff to make sure that this is a good deal for Butte and a good deal for the people of Butte. Now, in terms of taxes, when the staff of Butte Silver Bow went out to Quincy in August, there was a story ran in the Montana Standard, and I will quote from the story. And this is quoting, one is a direct quote, one's a paraphrase. It's of the chief executive, said that Sabi Data Center could draw other companies as tenants, employ technicians, computer programmers, electricians, and others, and swell the local tax base with new money for schools and parks, among other things. Later in the same story, quote, "Since the data centers have come to Quincy, they have built a state-of-the-art high school, remodeled their old high school to be their junior high, and built two more grade schools," he said, quote, "They built a state-of-the-art courthouse. They built new parks and a new hospital," close quotes. Now, is it any, is there any reason not to understand why we have people walking out on the streets thinking about the money truck coming in with tax money for all this kind of stuff to be done in Butte? But it can't be done in Butte. It can't be, the net tax we will get out of the data center for use of the county or the schools or the state is zero. Zero. It's in, it's in the connections park, a tax increment district. By law, taxes collected from new growth in a Tiffet zone are captured in the zone for at least 15 years. That's a minimal, that's a beginning life of his district. Or longer, by the way, if the, if the taxes are pledged to bonds. Pretty good chance it'd be 25 or 30 years. So we need to make sure that you, let's go out of our way to properly inform the citizens that there's no great big tax benefit out of this thing for us for a long time. We may get jobs, may get a lot of really good things about it. And again, I'm not saying I'm against it. I kind of like the idea, but I like the idea of us making sure that we present the facts to the citizens. And the facts right now are that the tax benefit for use for the schools and use for the county for a long time is zero. Yes?
Evan, I would just remind you of the three-minute rule that we ask for, for comment. So if you could, if you could summarize or sum it up.
Thank you for bearing with me that maybe extra minute or two. I appreciate it. And I just, I just urge, let's be cautious. Take your time, get all the facts, and let all the facts be out before we move ahead. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, let me pass this out, if I may.
Yeah. Is there any other member of the public that would like to speak on anything on tonight's agenda? Okay. Oh, do I have, okay. Welcome. Please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Joel Worth. I live at 2416 South Main. Excuse me. I just came, I wanted to just speak a little bit about the data center. I'm with the carpenters' union. I'm a representative for them. Our, our union represents 12 states, all of the western states. And I can say that where these data centers are being built, they're being built by union carpenters, and it's providing them with life-changing wages. So I would like that, just to be able to, you know, let you guys know that we have carpenters that are traveling out of state to build these, to make good money. And I know that, that's what will happen here, is it'll increase the wages for a lot of these guys, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public that would like to speak on any item on tonight's agenda? Okay. Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record and which communication you're referring to.
Ready Frost. Ready Frost, 2000 Roberts Avenue. I'm talking tonight about the, I'd like to make a couple of comments about the presentation being given and the Sabi Data Center as a whole. I am also a member of the carpenters' union, but in addition to that, I am a homeowner in Butte, Montana, Butte, America, that is. And this will be a great thing for our local, our local trade unions, as well as just local folks in general in terms of the amount of jobs and money being pumped back into the, into the economy. But I've heard a lot about water issues. 30 million gallons a day is a lot. You know what has a lot of water that we can't drink, but would be a great place to build a water treatment plant that could supply 30 million gallons a day is the pit. It's got 50 billion gallons of undrinkable water. Now, I mean, what say our city councilors? Maybe ask them, hey, we got a place with a lot of water. Perhaps you guys could, I don't know, help us out with that. Maybe, maybe they can talk to the EPA and such, see what we can do about that. And sure would be cool to get a power plant built in Montana Connections for this thing. If we could angle Northwest Energy and do, I don't know, shelling out, you know, enough money to build maybe a nuke plant, you know, at, at their own dime, or Sabi's dime, perhaps. That would also bring in a lot of jobs and money and some great benefits for Butte Silver Bow. I mean, power plant in our backyard, water treatment plant for the pit, clean it up. There's a lot of options available to you folks if you can negotiate right. And I believe, I believe in all of you and the decisions that you'll make in the coming days. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public that would like to speak on any item on tonight's agenda? Making sure I'm waiting to see if anybody jumps up. Okay. With that being said, I'll move on to the report of the chair. Just as a report of the chair, last Friday, there was a couple of commissioners that went and visited the Silver Lake Water System, just to look at the infrastructure that was there. And then there's another group of commissioners going this Friday as well to do the same thing. Just in public disclosure, it's, it's either three or four commissioners. It's not constituting a quorum, but it, it has been an eye-opening experience for me as a commissioner to go and see that water resource that's out there. And part of that is because of the questions that have come before us to just really do our due diligence on, on answering some of these questions. So just wanted to let people know about that. And then also, just to make sure that there's no questions out there in the public, I, I do want to reiterate that as we sit here tonight, there is, there's nothing before this body that is asking us for a decision on the Sabi Data Center. So there, there's no communication that's been submitted, you know, in the next week or two that we will be taking any action on. I know it's been discussed that we're, we're moving rapidly through this, but I just want to make sure that the public understands that there's no action on, on anything that is before us right now. So with that said, I would move on to Section 1, which is bid openings, public hearings, and/or presentations. We do have a couple of presentations. We have number one, Communication 2025-518. Karen Burns, Community Development Director, requesting Councilor Commissioners authorization to schedule a presentation on November 12th, 2025 regarding responses to the RFP for the purchase of 305 West Mercury and referral back to the review committee for recommendation. Ms. Burns?
Thank you, Chairman Morgan, members of council. I just wanted to set the table here a little bit. We, after having permission from this body to move forward with an RFP process to market the Business Development Center, we did advertise that in the newspaper and on the Butte Silver Bow website three times on August 23rd, August 30th, and September 6th, with proposals due back to our office on September 26th. We had two viewings of the building, which we also put notices out for. So we had two open houses, basically, if you will. We had multiple people attend those and walk through the building and ask questions. And so where we are in the process right now is, like you just stated, we are having presentations tonight from the two proposals that we did receive. Our review committee met and reviewed both proposals. We did create a matrix that scored them according to what was put into that RFP in the written document. We created a matrix for that and did review the proposals against that matrix. Both were deemed complete and responsive. So we have two proposals before us that we'd love for you to listen to presentations by both of those entities. And then we would ask that you would refer those back to us as a committee so we could come back to you with a recommendation as to whether or not you'd want to move forward with the sale of the building. The next steps after that, if you chose to move forward with a sale, we would then negotiate a purchase agreement with that entity, and that would also be brought before this body. So many steps. We're about halfway through if we were to bring it all the way to fruition. But tonight, we have two proposals in front of you, presentations by two different groups. The first one is from Michaela and Nathan Hack, Mountain Heart Media, and they're going to come and present to you about their plans and their ideas for the building. The second one is from the Urban Miners Collective, which is Jeff Riggs and Keith Waring, and they'll also present. I will let this body know that both proposals submitted for the same purchase price, which was the $450,000 that we put into the agreement. So there has not been anything different than, no, no other offers greater than that amount were given to us. So I just wanted to set the table there. I'd happy to answer any questions right now, or we can move on. And the first proposal will be presented by Michaela and Nathan Hack.
Ms. Burns, if I can, I just have a question regarding procedure. So, so your communication tonight is asking for a presentation and then referral back to the review committee?
Yes.
We'll just refer the actual bids back to your department, and then you'll, you'll come back with a separate communication with when a decision is made, correct? Ms. Burns?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Morgan, members of council. Yes, if you could refer the proposals back to our committee for a recommendation back to this body, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The first proposal is from Michaela Hack, and she's going to come on up.
Welcome.
Thank you. Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the council, Chief Executive Gallagher.
Could you just speak into the microphone just a little bit more?
Oh, yes, sorry. Can you hear me now?
No worries. We got you.
Okay. Make sure I have my button. So I want to ask you, what fuels the creative heartbeat of Butte? How can we make it stronger? My proposal is to purchase the Butte Business Center and keep it thriving, maintaining the current tenants while bringing new life into the space as a shared, community-focused workspace for small businesses and local creatives. I'll do a quick introduction of myself. I'm Michaela Hack. My husband Nathan Hack is there. I'm a freelance videographer here in Butte, and he works for Northwestern Energy as a vegetation coordinator. Those are our three young kids. They are sixth-generation Montanans. I want to tell you more about Mountain Heart Media, as it would be a primary tenant in the building should you choose our proposal to move forward. I've been producing documentary style videos for, across Montana, but mostly here in Butte for the last almost five years. I have worked closely with Butte Central for four years, making a lot of videos for them. I've created patient success stories for St. James. I did a series of videos for early Head Start as they celebrated their 25-year anniversary and highlighted other services by Aware. I have been fortunate enough to go up to the mine and get to see the views of Butte from up there, as I created website videos for Montana Resources. And I get to work with all sorts of small business owners across Butte, and it's really a wonderful job, and I love it. I've been working part-time while raising our three young children, but I've been laying the foundation for the next step in my business plan, and it's been rewarding to build something meaningful during that season. Now they're school-aged, and I'm ready to take this next step and grow in a bigger way. So the plan is to purchase a building to base Mountain Heart Media out of, but I want it to be more than that because I would like to create a shared space where creativity and business can grow together. I already work alongside so many other solopreneurs, from website designers to photographers and marketing professionals, and it's collaboration that makes us strong. So many of us now work solo, online, self-taught, figuring things out on our own. The flexibility is amazing, but when, what we're missing is the human connection. I'm part of two local networking groups, the Butte Business Network and Queen Pins, and I've seen firsthand how much power there is in connection and community. This project really is about creating a physical space that mirrors that same spirit, a place where collaboration can happen every day. Let me explain coworking spaces a little bit. They're a newer kind of office model that's been gaining popularity across the country over the past decade or so. In fact, the number of coworking spaces in the U.S. keeps growing. In fact, the number of coworking spaces in the U.S. keeps growing as demand keeps increasing with more people working remotely or starting their own small businesses. They're a place where freelancers, small business owners, and remote workers can rent a desk or table space or office without committing to a full lease. They're designed for people who might otherwise work from home or coffee shops but want a professional environment, good internet, a printer, other shared amenities. But what they, most importantly, what they really want is community. It's about connection. So that's been my business plan for Mountain Heart Media. And then I read the article about the Butte Business Center, and I felt like the vision for this building was already aligned with my vision. It was meant to be a business incubator. And I can imagine putting it up for sale was hard, to let go of that dream, but with this plan, you don't have to. And that leads me to the larger picture, what this space can become for Butte. Coworking space would start small, moving into the vacant first-floor office. It's right by the door, and current tenants would be invited to pop in, meet, have a cup of coffee, and network. As memberships grow, the coworking area could expand to the larger vacant second-floor office, growing gradually with no disruption to current tenants. Coworking spaces often cost anywhere from 40% to 70% less than traditional office leases, making professional workspace more accessible. So this isn't just a plan to manage a building, and it's not just setting up desks, slapping a raid on them, and waiting for people to show up. I'd be based out of it, and I'd be organizing workshops and networking events, showcases, anything that brings people together to share ideas, skills, and energy. I've talked with other small business owners, and the response has been overwhelmingly positive. Many said they would love to see a space like this. It's really important to me that this plan supports what is already working at the Butte Business Center. Current tenants would stay right where they are. This project simply adds new shared resources that makes the building even more valuable to everyone. The first thing we would do is talk to each tenant, maybe conduct a survey, probably both, because we tend to be thorough. But we'd like to, I mean, they've been there, they know what the building needs. So the current shared spaces, like the conference room and the learning room, would be included amenities for members and available to the public for rent. I'd move them to an online scheduling format for ease of use, along with the added studio space. I'd like to modernize both the conference room and the learning room, but I'd use feedback from the current tenants to decide how high that priority really is. And we'd continue to support community use. For example, the fire department has held CPR trainings there, and we plan to keep that relationship going. I created a simple visual concept, just to kind of bring the space to life. This is just that first-floor vacant office space. So we would add open seating areas, so this would be the base level, the lowest-level membership option, where people can just come in and grab a spot at a desk. One of those rooms could be set up with professional lighting for on-camera interviews, and the other one can be whatever the community needs it to be. Podcast space with sound-absorbent walls, set up for still photos, just a Zoom meeting room, kind of whatever the members end up needing. The point is to be flexible. We're creating a space where people can do their work but also find inspiration. And there's already private offices available throughout the building in various shapes and sizes. This project has more than revitalized a building, it helps strengthen the creative heartbeat of Butte. It fills the vacant space without displacing anyone. This plan simply adds shared amenities and new opportunities to network. The coworking concept will bring in new professionals and remote workers who want to work locally, which is also good for our economy. It's bringing income that comes from beyond our city, but gets spent here. At the same time, I know with ownership comes responsibility. The building will need continued care. For example, the rooftop air conditioner will likely need to be replaced in the near future, and I know other maintenance projects will come up. My plan, as detailed in the proposal I submitted, includes budgeting for those needs and keeping the property well-maintained for the long term. We've had experience managing property before, albeit on a smaller scale, but when we owned and ran a short-term rental here in Butte, we gained experience working with local contractors, plumbers, HVAC professionals, cleaning agencies, and we are familiar with the middle-of-the-night calls and stepping in to do last-minute repairs or cleaning as needed. Ultimately, this plan is about bringing new energy to a community asset while preserving its historic charm. I want to take a moment to talk about readiness and how I can take this on right now. I've spent the past several months preparing for this step financially, logistically, and professionally. So I'm ready to move forward with ownership and management if this proposal is approved. If I'm given the opportunity, managing and growing this business becomes my job alongside my video work. My schedule now allows me the time and flexibility to be here and involved in day-to-day operations. I'm excited to be here, to be hands-on, and to make sure this building thrives. Part of my plan includes beginning with a few basic building improvements to make management more efficient and secure. I also want to be transparent about rent. Many of the current tenants are paying rates that are well below the market average, and over time, we'll need to gradually adjust those to help cover operating expenses, things like insurance, utilities, and maintenance that the county currently provides. That said, we'll honor all existing leases and approach any changes thoughtfully and gradually. The goal is not to displace anyone, we want them to stay, and we want them to be successful. At the same time, we also need to make sure the building is well-maintained and sustainable. And with the modern coworking model, we're actually creating more pricing options for tenants. At the heart of this proposal is something really simple. I love Butte, our family loves Butte. My family and I have put down roots here, we're invested in this community, and I'd be honored to take on the Butte Business Center. The city has such a rich, creative spirit, I see it every day, and I want to create a space that supports that. When we combine the history of this building, the historic charm of Butte, with the energy of people working and creating together, you don't just fuel the creative heartbeat, you'll see it thrive. Thank you for considering my proposal and for the work you do. I'd be happy to answer questions. I don't know if I do that right now or at the end of both of them.
Thank you, Michaela, for the presentation and for submitting a proposal. I do have a question for you. You know, part of, of this project would entire, would require you to purchase the building at the price, as Ms. Burns alluded to. But what about past that cost? Do you have the financial means to start, you know, using the building, improving the building, letters of credit, cash on hand? What's, what's your thought there?
We have $100,000 just set aside for the first couple of years of maintenance and operating costs.
Okay, thank you. Is it, is there any other questions that the commissioners has for Michaela? Commissioner Thatcher?
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. Thank you for your presentation, thank you for being here, and I, I think you put together a very thoughtful and worthwhile presentation, I appreciated that. I just have a couple of quick questions. So you talk about your, your rents being increased eventually, which I understand, but then you also talk about a membership model as well. And so I'm wondering if there's a difference, and I guess how that difference will be explained to local, I mean, to your current tenants? Because to me, if, if I pay it, I guess, could you just touch on that? I'm a little confused, thank you.
Ms. Hack?
Yeah, this would be a little bit different than a lot of the coworking spaces, as it does have such a variety of spaces for offices, but it is normal for them to offer private offices and the cowork, you know, and the open desk, hot desk model. And so similar, I mean, a space has a monthly rent, so the membership would have, if it's just open seating, it would have a monthly price tag, and it would be separate than like, this office's monthly rent is XYZ, usually based off square footage.
Ms. Thatcher, follow-up? Nope. Any other questions that the commissioner has, commissioners have? Pardon me. All right, Ms. Hack, thank you very much. Ms. Burns?
Thank you, Chairman Morgan and members of council. The next presentation will be made by Jeff Riggs and Keith Waring from Urban Miners Collective.
Welcome.
Chairman Morgan, members of the council, thanks for allowing us to give this presentation. We're super excited about it. I'm going to start by giving you a quick background. I was born and raised in Clement Falls, Oregon, great spot, loved it out there, and came out to Montana State to play basketball and get a business degree, kind of in that order too, so, business degree didn't work out that great. And I remember in 1997, one of my college teammates, Danny Sprinkle, who's now the head coach at University of Washington, was like, hey, we're going to Butte on St. Patty's Day. I'm like, all right, and I was the best teammate ever, because I didn't drink and I had a van, so I was like the ultimate DD. And so I piled in a bunch of teammates, and we rolled over here to Butte. And I just remember walking around going, this, this isn't Montana, where, where am I right now? It was just such a unique place, and I always remembered that. And through my career, I had restaurants for 20 years, have always had some rentals here and there. And at the end of my restaurant career, kind of had an opportunity to take some money and see what we wanted to do with it with our family and where to invest it. And we came over here to Butte, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. I also want to introduce my business partner, Keith Waring. He's, what he calls himself is a recovering engineer, and so he really wanted to stay further towards the back, but I made him come up to the first row here, so you have to bear with his shyness over there. He was with Thomas Deans and Hoskins Engineering Firm for 28 years, and was the youngest ever partner, and was a partner there for 18 of those years. And I talked him off the cliff and, and got him over to do some investing in Butte as well, and I think that he's, he's happy for any day he doesn't have to do engineering. So he's, he's fired up about this too. Our story in Butte, when we started over here in 2019, we kind of didn't know what to expect, and we had a, we had a lot of options at that time of things that were on the market. And we now have, we added it up, we have $120,000, just a bit over in square footage in Uptown Butte, which is an insane number. And an equally insane number is, one thing that I know is a little contentious about selling this building or not selling this building, is one thing we've done, is we've taken properties that were owned by either nonprofits or other non-taxpaying entities and put them on the tax roll, and we now are paying over $80,000 a year in tax to the city, or to the state and city. And I, I got a bit of a cold sweat when Keith told me that number, it seemed really high. I'm like, can you double-check that? That seems absurd, but that's the number, and, but we're sure proud of being able to contribute that to the, to the county. Our first building that we bought was the First Baptist Church, and it took a long time, about a year of negotiating, figuring out, you know, how that was going to work. The congregation there was really skeptical about selling it in general, and I think the one thing that we did that turned the tide for us is we, we told them that we weren't going to do anything to the sanctuary space above as far as changing it and dismantling it, anything like that. And that was a handshake agreement, and we've committed to that to this day, and, and I still walk into that space and think, I'm not qualified to own this. It's beautiful Oregon, and these stained glass windows in there, it looks more like a museum, and, and people use it for weddings and events. As you can see, my daughter's fired up about putting some signage up there to do some marketing for us. We renovated the garden-level space there and turned it into a short-term rental, and it was on Dust to Dazzle a few years ago, and was a super fun project. And we use the Butte CPR Group. I love reusing original materials, and we often raid their warehouse and take lots of extra materials that we can use for these projects that we've been doing. The above pictures are kind of some before, and, and the below ones, after picture. And so again, these projects, how we do them is kind of seeing what the original use and, and look of the building was, and trying to go back to that, and that's really been something that has worked really well for us. The next building is the Manual Arts Building, is what we call it. Before that, it was known maybe as the Demolay or the Montana Coke Company, and it's another just beautiful building. We purchased that one in 2021, and the fourth floor is a rental for anybody brave enough to climb up all those stairs to get up there. And we're currently installing fire sprinklers in the whole building so that we can utilize more residential units in that space. And it's a, it's actually just right across the street from the Business Development Center. The next building, and the one probably the most similar to the one we're talking about right now, is the Thornton Building, and we purchased that in 2022. And when we bought that building, it was 30% occupied, and we've since got it, I think we have 144 doors there, and we have three unoccupied doors. And so we worked really hard to get those back in use. And when we bought it, there was, the elevator was broken, the heat in the first and second floor were, were hit or miss, and so we worked really hard to get that back into usable space. And like I said, there's only three open spaces in, in the entire building right now. We renovated the ballroom in there and have used it for events and weddings, funerals, business events, and it's been a great success in there as well. And we're currently updating lock systems that I think are, were quite a ways outdated. When we have to give somebody a new key card, it comes from a Windows 98 computer, and we're not sure how many, how many minutes that thing has left in it, so we're excited to get that wrapped up as well. We updated the heating system, and, and this is awesome, but one of our engineers, because also in this building is a data center, and one of our engineers one day was like, hey, you should use all this heat to put it in, back into the building, you can heat the building. And so we put new boiler system in with a grant from the USDA and the URA, and we actually cut our power bill in half because of using the data center's heat in the building. So it was, it was a total win-win on that project and, and worked out really well for us. We did a lot of renovating and a lot of work in that space, and the, it's again, there was a lot of just wide-open areas, similar to what the BDC has now, that we were able to make into smaller spaces, which really is where the market is right now. There's a ton of people, from mental health counselors to people working from home and at remote, working remote, need, need a space, and that's something that's worked out really well for us, and, and see a similar fit with that business. Hey, my daughter's, if you can, just help me make the presentation, and apparently snuck this in, little punks. The next building we bought was the Elks Building, and this one was more recent, 2024. And it was a kind of a unique deal, because I think the Elks were struggling financially and, and didn't know where their future lied. And, and we wanted to see, we love this building, it's obviously a beautiful and historic building to Uptown, and so we talked with them about keeping them in the space, and so they have a dollar a year, a year lease. It's a 99-year lease that they're able to stay in that space and utilize it. They have their bar. We updated and changed up the, the event space, we added some windows, it looked like an old 70s casino with that sweet carpet and, and no, no windows in the area, you never knew what time it was in there. And so we added that stuff in, and it's, looks great in there, and they're doing awesome, they're using it for a ton of events, and we're excited to then start moving up to the next couple of floors, the second floor and the third floor, to do some work up there and get those active as well. And one of, another project, similar to the Thornton, was we added in another heating system, because the one that was in there was basically heating a floor and a half, and so we added in a new boiler, and so that we'll be able to utilize that for the second and the third floor. And we've started doing some work on the, on the second floor there, there's a Grand Lodge space up there, which is so, so cool. It's, it's where the Elks members originally met, and it's, I'm really excited about getting that back into use, is it's, it's a really historic and beautiful-looking space. I don't think the third-floor space has been used since maybe the 70s. No one really knows for sure, but there is a sign when you go up the stairs that says, no women allowed unless you're the housekeeper. So I'm guessing it's pretty old-school. My daughters keep wanting to rip it down, but I don't let them. I, I know, that's history, we can leave that for now. The most recent purchase, we had the Benai Israel Temple, which is also, it's on Galena and very close to the Business Development Center. which is also, it's on Galena and very close to the Business Development Center. And this one was another one that we were approached by, um, the congregation. And, and they said, you know, we've heard what you guys have done with some of these other buildings. And we'd wonder if you'd be interested in doing a similar deal, which we did and love. And so this one's kind of at the beginning stage. It's a smaller building than some of the other ones that we have. But again, another building that just has, um, some phenomenal, um, history and, and, you know, stained glass window in there. And so we kind of have a similar deal with, that we do with the Elks, but we've also set it up similar to what we did in the First Baptist Church, which was we'll make the garden level an apartment. And that'll keep somebody in the space kind of 24/7. So if anything happens or goes on in the building, there'll be somebody there. And then the sanctuary space up above can be used for events. And, and it already has been and we're hoping to continue to use that more for events. So moving on to the BDC, um, most of you guys probably already know all this stuff, but it was the Boys Central Catholic School. And the city purchased it in 1986 to use as a business incubator. And I think it, back then it was mid 20s was the unemployment rate. And it was, it was an awesome idea and thought. And, and man, those city folks back in the 80s, they really were grinding to keep this place going. And they, they were, they were successful in doing it, which, which was not an easy task. And so fast forward to now, there's, you know, there's people still in there, but it doesn't have the same use as that, as that incubation that it did. And so what our commitment to Butte Silver Bow and to those tenants would be is that it is true, I mean, I know that there was some talk about the value of the building. And based on, I mean, again, this is, the numbers part of it are kind of my wheelhouse. And, and as it is right now, it doesn't cash flow. And, and that's at the 450 number. And I think we've, we've gotten into very similar buildings like this and, and been able to turn them around. And I would, I would point again back to the Thornton Building where we had the majority of the tenants that were in there when we bought that building are still there. And I think that's the best, um, what I could say about the, the current, to the current tenants in that building is that we'll do right by them as best we can. And I think that there's a balance there and we're, we're not looking to kill it. We're not looking to like make every last dollar we can. And we've shown that in our past buildings where everything that we've made in those buildings has been reinvested back into them. And so that is the similar business model. It's worked out well for us and we see it as we're buy and hold investors. And we see it as a long-term vision and we'll get our payout at the end of it. And right now it's just super fun working on these old historic buildings and figuring out, again, the history of them and getting to know those buildings and what they used to look like and, and what, what we can use and make them viable for the next 100 years. And so, um, a big advantage that we have is we currently have 12 employees from maintenance, construction, cleaning. And so we have the economies of scale, so to speak, where we can come in and, and put people in positions to fix things. I know there's a few things that kind of right away need to be fixed. Like there's some safety things and I know some of the tenants, it's, it's a funky system, but they have like a board and like the last one out set the alarm. And that shouldn't be on the tenants to have to do that. And so there's things like that. The west side doors are, are taped together. We can get those fixed. And so we have the resources and the ability to, um, make those things happen. One thing, again, going back to the Thornton, that was really successful for us when we very first started was we had a symposium for mental health counselors in that ballroom. And we had flyers out and said, hey, come on into this space. And, and we have, I think, 15 mental health counselors in that Thornton Building right now that have been with us. And it's a, uh, industry that we love supporting. And I think in this space, there's quite a few mental health counselors. And I think there was some anxiety about what's going to happen to the people in there. And we really, it, it means a lot to us to have a good relationships with our tenants and make sure that they are, um, taken care of. And that's something that we would commit to doing as well. The SBDDC is in there, one of my all-time favorite crew. And we've worked with Holly in the past on that. And, and there are another group in there that we definitely want to keep in there and keep them, um, they're, they're so important, what they do for the community. And we really want to support that as well. Um, we, I do want to add that we would honor all existing leases in the building. And the one thing that we would do is add a triple net. And that's a pretty common thing for commercial business. And so what that is, is it's adding the taxes, insurance and common area maintenance. And those are things that are basically a pass-through. And so whatever the, um, cleaning is and the snow plowing and, and the lawn mowing, those kinds of things, they just get passed through and the tenants pay them based on their size of their square footage. And again, it's a pretty common thing in the commercial real estate industry. And it's something that we did at the Thornton. And it's, again, we, we've, this is kind of things that we've gotten really good at and efficient with, in doing. And it's the best for the tenants because it keeps their rate where they are. And we still have some tenants in the Thornton Building that are in there and still at their, not same rate, but very, very close to it and, and under, under market value, which was similar to how this one was set up. Um, our five-year plan, I think, you know, like I said initially, there, there isn't a lot of room for, um, growth in the tenants that are currently there. And so what we would propose is adding more space in. And again, in the similar way, we did it in the Thornton Building, which is adding smaller offices for people that are remote work, mental health counselors, other people that just need a small space. And that seems to be the wheelhouse right now in that market. And, and something that we could do is we feel like we can add 14 offices in there pretty quick. And so from a revenue growth standpoint, that's where we would focus our growth as opposed to having to raise other people's rates. And if we were able to do this and build out those office spaces, which we're committed, we would be committed to in making that investment, then that's where we could grab the more revenue to make it a profitable, um, building. Um, as I mentioned, there's some safety features for the tenants that we would want to address right away. And, um, we, like I said, we have a significant amount of staff that we would be able to utilize. We have a, um, online program that we are able to, um, use for tenants. And so if they have an issue, the light's out or, or their lock's not working, they can send a message and it goes to the right person in our crew and they can head over and get that fixed for them. And so again, all of our buildings are uptown, so it's super easy for people to get in and out of those spaces and, and get over to them. One other advantage that we can offer to the tenants is that, that data center I talked about in the Thornton Building, we can utilize that internet over at the BDC. And it, it's going to be way more reliable. We, it's all triple redundant in, in that space. And we can run a line straight to that Business Development Center and then, um, offer internet. And right now we offer internet to the Thornton, um, tenants at $50 a month. And so I know a lot of them that I've talked to are in the 100 to 200 range for internet. So we can save them some money by utilizing that as well. Um, as, um, we mentioned, the offer is at that 450, which is, I know, the, the low end of it. But I, I think that we feel like that that's where the value is right now. And we would put in work. And again, this is how all of our buildings have been built and, and grown is that we'll put in the work and the time and the energy to grow them and get them in a position where they're going to be worth more because of that time and energy and, and investments we put into them. This is where I nerded out, but this is like a pro forma. I'm not going to go through it, but if anybody has any questions about what those financials look like specifically, I'm happy, I'm happy to refer back to it. So, um, yeah, we appreciate the opportunity and, and happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Thank you for the presentation. Just along the lines of my last question, you know, as far as purchasing, it's one thing, but the financial means to start, you know, fresh. I mean, do you have lines of credits, things like that established so that you'd be able to, to reinvest right away?
Yeah, we have, we don't have a line of credit, but we have a cash backup that is significant enough to be able to do the immediate work and to carry a loss forward. And we would be able to, um, do that for quite amount of time in, in a building like this. Because in my pro forma, I mean, the, the, um, loss per month is $800 as, as it sits right now. And so it, it's not anything that would be significant for us. And, and again, we would have a list of three or four things that right away we would want to get fixed up there again, mostly for safety purposes.
Sure. One other question that I would have, just based on the other projects that you, you mentioned today. If you were taking on this, this project, would any of those projects suffer from you, you know, changing focus from those projects to this project?
Yeah, Chairman Morgan and the members of council, I think that we feel like right now we're in a good position. The Thornton Building, knock on wood, is in great shape. And like I said, with the, not just the vacancy rate, but also with the work that's been done in, in the building. And so we feel really good about that one. And again, where our economies of scale have grown, we feel like we have the staff to be able to take on this building no problem.
Okay. Is there any other commissioners that have any questions? All right. Well, thank you very much for the presentation. Ms. Burns, do you have any follow-up?
Uh, thank you, Chairman Morgan, sorry, members of council. Um, I can forward to the commissioners, um, copies of these presentations in your emails tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, just to follow the procedures that we usually follow with bid openings, I would suggest that this body make a motion that we refer these, um, proposals back to Mrs. Burns's department for them to report back to us um, at a later ta, or later time with another communication. And then we still have this later on the agenda for the community of the whole that we can decide what to do with the actual communication. So that, that's just a, that's just a suggestion. Somebody would have to make that in the form of a motion. Commissioner Thatcher.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Morgan. So you're saying you want that motion made, um, right now and not down the line on the agenda, correct?
Thanks, Commissioner Thatcher. Yeah, just as we do in the bid openings, we refer the bids to the department at this, at this stage. Uh, Commissioner Thatcher.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. Then I would like to make a motion to refer, um, these presentations and proposals back to the Community Development Office with a recommendation back to council.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded to refer these back to the Community Development Department for the recommendation. On the question, Commissioner Shea.
I'm just confused procedurally. Why are we referring the presentation instead of addressing it when it's on the agenda? When we get to that agenda item?
Just trying to figure out what to do with these, but I'm just following the same procedure that we do with bid openings, where we make the referral when we, after we open the bid openings, there's a motion made that refers them back to the department. And then later on, we can decide what to do with the actual communication that addresses the presentation or her request for the presentation. I mean, if, if you don't want to go through this process or this motion to refer them, by all means, you don't have to. We can take it up later in the agenda if the council chooses to do so.
Okay, I was just confused that it's a presentation and not a bid opening. So you're the chairman, I trust you.
Sure. So, so the communication does ask in the last sentence for a referral back to the review committee for recommendation. So it is, it is a request for a presentation, but it does ask that they get referred back to the department. And so it is asking for that action. And so I, I do feel it is appropriate that the commissioners do refer them back to that department. County Attorney in Earth, you can correct me if I'm, if I'm misspeaking.
Uh, Commissioner Morgan, no, you're correct.
Okay. There is a motion on the floor that's been seconded. Is there anything else on the question? Commissioner O'Leary.
I guess just to follow up on what Commissioner Shea is saying, that the communication number seven, 2025-518, also asks for a referral back to, uh, review committee for recommendations. So I'm not sure, I guess I'm just as confused as, as Commissioner Shea.
Commissioner O'Leary, uh, number seven is the exact same communication that we are dealing with right now in the sense it's, it's asking for the presentation. And this, this is the same process that you will see on a bid opening where you have a member of the department ask for a, a bid opening. And then we have the bid opening at the very beginning of the meeting and we refer those bids to the department. And then later on, as we go through the Committee of the Whole Agenda, either a regular meeting or Committee of the Whole meeting, we do end up putting that communication on file, having the bid opening has been presented. Tomato, tomato in the sense, I mean, we could take action. There is a motion on the floor now that, that sends them back to the, to the body. And then the suggestion later in the agenda would be that you would just simply place this communication on file, just to take a formal action on that communication. So. Any follow-up? Commissioner Shea.
Thank you. One request that I would make to, um, the chief executive and to Director Burns is to include, um, one of the commissioners that's on the ad hoc committee, Commissioner Boyle or Commissioner O'Leary or Commissioner Thatcher, um, in that internal committee that's reviewing the, um, proposals to make a recommendation back to the council. Just something I would ask you to consider.
Okay, any other questions? So the motion that you're voting on right now is to refer these proposals back to the Community Development Department and ask for their recommendation at a later time. Anything else on the question? Would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Nine ye, zero nae.
Okay, thank you. The motion passes. Moving on to number two, communication 2025-546. Sarah Bordune, Butte, Montana, requesting council of commissioners to answer some questions from the October 16th, 2025 public forum, Beyond the Boom on November 12th, 2025, regarding the impacts, the data center that may be coming to Butte, Montana. Ms. Bordune, welcome to the council meeting. Um, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan.
Oh, there you go.
There we go. Thank you, Chairman Morgan, Chief Executive Gallagher and the Council of Commissioners. My name is Sarah Bordune. I am at 1127 Waukesha Street. Um, I'm honored to be able to present the questions collected during the Beyond the Boom Community Conversation that we put on October 16th up at Montana Tech. Uh, for background regarding where these questions came from, um, these questions were collected on note cards from the audience at the October 16th Community Conversation. At the meeting, we presented some background regarding the data center construction boom, what other communities are experiencing regarding data centers. And we presented what we know about the proposed data center at Montana Connections. And I, I might need to clarify that right now. It's just an op, a sale option at this point. Um, but there's been a lot of negotiation regarding, um, having a data center come to Montana Connections near Buxton, Montana. The source of the Montana Connections data center information that we used came mostly from the April 2025 Council of Commissioners meeting, during which there was an approval for the sales option, um, to Horizon LLC, which is associated with Sabi, um, Sabi Data Centers, to purchase about 600 acres at Montana Connections. Um, for those interested, streaming at home, or, um, you can refer to that, um, meeting and watch it through YouTube. Um, it's the April meeting. Also, for those interested in understanding Sabi Data Centers, you can Google the clients of Sabi Data Centers as well as Sabi's partner corporate corporations. And this gives you a, a better idea that, um, Sabi Data Centers is associated with big AI companies. I am able to share the October 16th slideshow from the community meeting with people who contact me. That is available. Um, so, um, now I will read you those questions. So these were collected, um, and they were the honest questions of the audience. Um, I believe you have copies, is that true? Okay, good. I believe you have copies. Is that true? Okay, good. So the first question was, what is the footprint and acreage of the projects that are being proposed? I think a side question was, where are they in Montana Connections? What, what's the footprint going to be like? What light pollution would result? The comment in this question was, I like my nights dark. What about the drive-in? Was another question. What noise mitigation measures are being planned? If the developers are not proposing them, how will Butte Silver Bow protect people from nuisance noise levels? There's currently not a noise ordinance in our county. What about wastewater? What will be its chemical composition? How will it be handled? Who will pay? How much will it cost? Has Butte Silver Bow developed a decision process that will evaluate data center projects and power plants in terms of permanent jobs and usable taxes compared to water use and power costs impacts on consumers? Will this be done and shared with the public ahead of decision making? What is the realistic burden on our water supply? And I imagine that was part of your Silver Lake trip. Will the ratepayers see rate hikes to pay for the provision of energy supply and services, as well as infrastructure to data centers? Did Butte Silver Bow sell the data center 600 acres for $2,000 per acre? If it hasn't finalized the deal yet, does it anticipate doing so and in what timeframe? What public process will there be prior to approval? Why isn't there a focused effort to protect Montanans across the state from negative impacts of data centers on our power bills, water, and future? Can we rely on the Public Service Commission, governor and legislature, to protect Montanans? If they fail to do so, what is Butte Silver Bow going to do to protect people in the area? If we can get strong environmental safeguards and local hiring guarantees, wouldn't this be a win-win for Butte? Good jobs and responsible development? That was question 11. Question 12, are there any studies on the adverse health effects from communities with data centers? 13, are there health and safety promises or harm reductions planned from existing or proposed data center developments, developers? 14, are the taxable values of Atlas and REC silicone roughly the same? This is in reference to a slide that we had at the present, presentation showing the reducing taxes due to depreciation for Atlas versus the pretty steady taxes that REC pays. Is there a way to compare the two, that is apples to apples? And 15, with the data center being proposed to be built in Buxton, how do we guarantee the big hole won't be used as an additional water source for cooling by data centers? Number 16, why did the Butte Silver Bow County Commissioners approve the Sabi data center so fast? 17, what will the public process be going forward? So that's, that's the list of questions that were collected. Before we had that panel discussion, I did email all the county commissioners the Virginia 2023 Legislative Data Center Report. Virginia is one of the densest data center states, and they've learned a lot from having a lot of data centers. And so they, what, one thing they learned is they needed more regulation. And the state of Montana does not currently have those regulations. So I do refer you to that document for inspiration, because there's a section on local government actions that can be taken, including noise ordinances requiring, for instance, Sabi data centers to, in contract form, say how much they're going, water they're going to use. And then also prior noise studies, prior to construction abatement that is in response to those noise studies, and then some teeth in a noise ordinance after construction. So that's what I got.
Thank you, Ms. Bordoun. Just to kind of add to this conversation. So as everybody will remember, this body did forward it to the Montana Connections TED Board for their review and to answer maybe some questions with staff along those lines. There is a meeting this Friday, November 14th, at noon at the Business Development Center. And it's my understanding that there will be a representative from Sabi there as well to maybe answer any additional questions that might, might have come up. And so, so again, that meeting is at noon. You and I discussed, you know, and you were going to attend that. So
Yes.
That agenda has been set, and it will be taking place at noon on Friday on that. The other thing that I, I wanted to let people know is Butte Silver Bow staff did take some time and answer some of these questions.
Oh, great.
You know, in a preliminary form. And then, you know, if there is follow-up, obviously the, the TED meeting is, is Friday. I know when you and, you and I had talked, it was important to you to make the, the responses kind of in that public limelight, if you will. And so I would ask that our council secretary does post the answers to these questions along this communication, kind of as an attachment to, to this communication, so that the public would be able to get it. I, I for one, would have no problem reading the responses into the record, if that's something that you would, would want me to do. I've, I've, some of them are rather lengthy, but they're not too bad. As people will recall, I had to read the comments for the consent decree back in the day. And so this is child's play on, on how short the answers are. So if that's something that you would, would want, I, I have no problem reading them into the record.
Yeah, I think if, if it's not a half hour's worth of reading, I, I think it would be helpful to those streaming at home.
To, yeah, to just to kind of get an, an understanding of what those answers look like. So I'm just going to take the questions. Sorry to bore you as I start reading, but I'll just go through them as they have them answered, and then we can go on from there. So number one, what is the footprint, the acreage of the projects that are being proposed? Answer, the purchase and sale agreement includes 606.5 acres of Butte Silver Bow land in the Montana Connections Targeted Economic Development District, which is also known as the MC TED. Number two, what light pollution would result? I like my dark nights. What about the, the drive-in? Businesses in the TED must comply with local zoning code for lighting, as well as any safety requirements for the respective industries. Businesses currently in the, in the TED, when I say TED, it's the MC TED, Montana Connections TED, have always complied with our request for lighting that does not impact nearby businesses, including the Butte Silver Bow drive-in. As we all, as we, as we do with all businesses in the district, we will work with the company to ensure lighting is both safe and conscientious of nearby businesses. Number three, what noise mitigation measures are being planned? If the developers are not proposing them, how will Butte Silver Bow protect people from nuisance noise levels? Answer, businesses in the TED are located in the Ramsey Rural Industrial Zone RM2, the zoning ordinance for noise for the zone states. The use shall not create any noise measured on a neighboring residential or non-zone property not under common ownership with the property on which the noise is generated, which exceeds the following levels. Measures in, measured in decibels on the A scale of the standard sound level meter having characteristics defined by the American National Standards Institute, publication S1 dot four dash 1971. When the property on the which the noise is measured is in a residential or non-zone district, a maximum dB permitted to occur on a 10% of the time basis is an L10 value of 60 dB per nA. Number two, E Earthborn vibration standards, no use operation or activity shall cause or create an Earthborn vibration in excess of the peak particle velocities prescribed below. One, vibration shall be measured at any RM2 zone boundary line, and such measurements shall not exceed a peak particle velocity of 0.2 inches per second, or vibration is produced as discrete impulses, and such impulses do not exceed a frequency of 100 per minute. Then the peak particle velocity shall not exceed 0.4 inches per second. The instrument used for these measurements shall be a three-component measuring system capable of simultaneous measurement of vibration in three mutually perpendicular directions. The maximum particle velocity shall be the vector sum of the three individual components recorded. Number two, the maximum vibration is given as particle velocity, which may be measured directly with suitable instrumentation or computed on the basis of displacement and frequency. When computed, the following formula shall be used. This one is going to be fun. Number eight, PV equals 6.28 F times D. And then B, PV equals particle velocity inches per second. F is a vibration frequency cycles per second, and D is a single amplitude displacement of the vibration inches. Number, the response three to this thing, the following sources of, of vibration are exempt. Transportation vehicles not under the control of industrial use and temporary construction activity between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM. Number four, what about wastewater? What will be the chemical composition? How will it be handled? Who will pay? And how much will it cost? Businesses in the MTED must comply with local, state, and federal regulations when it comes to wastewater. These regulations include our local pretreatment standards, Montana DEQ standards, and EPA standards. There are several options for water usage that the company is exploring during this due diligence period. The chemical composition will not be known until the design plans are finalized. All users of the industrial water in the, in the TED are responsible for any fees associated with wastewater discharge. If upgrades are needed to wastewater infrastructure, these upgrades are the responsibility of the user. Number five, has Butte Silver Bow developed a decision process that will evaluate data center projects and power plants in terms of permanent jobs and usable taxes compared to water use and power cost impacts on consumers? Will this be done and shared with the public ahead of decision making? All projects that are considered in the TED must follow the current public process. Here's an outline of this process. Potential projects are carefully considered by staff using economic development principles, including but not limited to parameters such as workforce, housing, land availability, zoning regulations, and infrastructure requirements. Answering these questions can take months and sometimes years. When a potential project is ready to be moved in front of the TED Board of Directors, staff will work with the company to do so. A formal presentation of the project to the TED Board of Directors is made. Agendas for these meetings are published 48 hours in advance of the meetings. These are public board meetings. If the MC TED Board of Directors recommends that the project move forward, it can then move forward to the Council of Commissioners. Staff will then place recommendations from the MTED Board on the council agenda. The Council of Commissioners can vote on whether or not to enter into an agreement with the company at that time. If the agreement passes the Council of Commissioners, it allows the company to enter a due diligence period where the, where they must satisfy the requirements of the agreement in order to use their option to purchase the land. If the company purchases the land and uses their option, a resolution of sale is brought before the Council of Commissioners to be passed before the sale is final. The company still must satisfy the purchase agreement. There is always a clawback provision in our agreements to get the land back if conditions are not satisfied. B, the Montana Public Service Commission is responsible for the regulation of the, of the power in the state of Montana. The Lawrence Berkeley Labs Brattle Group put out an in-depth study of drivers for electricity price changes. They show that increasing loads at the state level has downward pressure on prices, because more as systems costs are spread over the demand. And then in this document, there's a link to that report that people will be able to get to. Number six, what is the realistic burden in our water supply? Yet to be determined, but Butte Silver Bow will be the driver of all water contracts, and the cost will be recovered by the user and not by the public. Number seven, will the ratepayers see rate hikes to pay for the provision of energy supply and services, as well as infrastructure to the data centers? Northwestern Energy is regulated utility through Montana Public Service Commission. Any change, the rates must be approved through the PSC. Businesses themselves have been historically responsible for any necessary upgrades to transmission lines and transmission infrastructure. Again, the Lawrence Berkeley Labs Brattle Group put out an in-depth survey of the drivers for the electricity price changes. They show that increasing loads at the state level has downward pressure on the prices, because more of a system costs are spread over the demand. Again, there's a link to that study as well. Number eight, did Butte Silver Bow sell the data center 600 acres for $2,000 per acre? If it isn't, or if it hasn't finalized the deal yet, does it anticipate doing so? And in what timeframe, what public process will there be prior to approval? Butte Silver Bow entered into a purchase and sale agreement with Horizons Montana LLC for 606.5 acres in the TED. This PSA has been amended. It extends the due diligence period to February 11th, 2026. Before this date, Horizons Montana LLC must either exercise their option to purchase the land according to the terms set forth in the agreement, or the agreement terminates. As per the agreement, if they exercise their option to purchase, a resolution to purchase will be presented to the Council of Commissioners. It will be up to the Council of Commissioners to pass the resolution, and this time, members, or at this time, members of the public can submit public comment about the resolution. Since the inception of the Montana Connection TIFID TED Board, or TED, all county-owned parcels have had a price tag of $2,000 per acre. Number nine, why is, why isn't there a focused effort to protect Montanans across the state from the negative impacts of data centers on our power bills, water, and future? The Montana Public Service Commission is responsible for the regulation of the energy in the state of Montana. The Lawrence Berkeley Labs Brattle Group put out an in-depth survey of drivers for electricity price changes. They show that the increasing loads at the state level has downward pressure on prices, because the more systems costs are spread over the demand. Again, there's a link to that study, so you can take a look at it. Butte Silver Bow is the owner of the Silver Lake Water System. The, the system is an industrial water system that is separate from our current potable water system. The Silver, Silver Lake Water System does not impact our current potable water system. Butte Silver Bow is responsible for the system and its users. Number 10, can we rely on the PSC, governor and legislature, to protect Montanans if they fail to do so? What is Butte Silver Bow going to do to protect people in the area? Businesses in the TED must comply with local, state, and federal regulations. These regulations include our local zoning ordinance, water pretreatment standards, Montana DEQ standards, and EPA standards. Number 11, if we can get strong environmental safeguards and local hiring guarantees, wouldn't this be a win for Butte? Good jobs and responsible development? Yes, we believe this is a win-win for Butte, and we believe our local laws and public process are already set up for success with this particular group, or with this particular project. Businesses in the TED must comply with local, state, federal regulations. These regulations include our local zoning ordinance, water pretreatment standards, Montana DEQ standards, and EPA standards. Job creation is a central economic development principle that is heavily considered when a business looks to locate in the TED. Number 12, are there any studies on the adverse health effects from communities with data centers? To find a study that is comparable to the proposed project depends on a few factors. Type of data center you are studying, the design of the data center you are studying, and the type health effects you are studying. It is important to note that there are several different types of data center designs, and that not all data centers function in the same way. So if you are looking into studies, we encourage you to be aware of this factor. We encourage the public to research Sabi's current campus in Quincy, Washington, to understand the standards this company holds itself to. For questions concerning health effects in urban areas, Sabi owns a data center in New York City, New, in New York City. New York City is an urban high-density population center. There's also a link in there so that you can check out that data center in New York as well. 13, are there health and safety promises or harm reductions planned from existing or proposed data center developers? Current zoning requirements in the TED have several existing standards that must be met for human health, environmental health, and safety. We encourage the, the public to research Sabi's current campus in Quincy, Washington, to understand the standards that this company holds itself to. 14, are the taxable values of Atlas and REC roughly the same? Is there a Is there a way to compare the two? That is apples to apples. The proposed .009 tax set by the state legislature is $9 million a year on a $1 billion facility. Apply this value to Mills and property tax collection on the increment is approximately $5 million a year. This is not apples-to-apples comparison. The industries are not the same at all. Property taxes are based on value assessments determined by the DOR, including land, income, and equipment. Number 15, with the data center being proposed to be built in Buxton, how do we guarantee the big hole won't be used as an additional water source for cooling data centers? Businesses in the TED have access to both potable and non-potable water sources. The potable sources can include Basin Creek Molten Big Hole. These are primarily used for facility daily use, Peren Drinking Water Metro Sewer and Peren, or can be used for any food-grade operations that businesses might have. It is important to note that infrastructure in the TED is currently not set up for large users of potable water. If a potable water user were to request an amount that we cannot deliver, this would require an analysis of both availability and infrastructure improvements. The non-potable water source is the Silver Lake Water System, which Butte Silver Bow is the owner of. Businesses in the TED must set up a contract with Butte Silver Bow to have access to the Silver Lake Water System, and this contract will consider several factors that impact BSB's system. Why did the Butte Silver Bow County Commissioners approve the SABE data center so fast? While staff cannot speak of why the Butte Silver Bow County Commissioners approved this purchase and sale agreement, we can speak to the process that led to the presentation of a process and sale agreement before the Montana Connections Board of Directors and then the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners. This is kind of repetitive on a previous question. All projects that are considered in the TED must follow the current public process. Potential projects are carefully considered by staff using economic development principles, including but not limited to parameters such as workforce, housing, land availability, zoning regulations, and infrastructure requirements. Answering these questions can take months and sometimes years. When a potential project is ready to be moved in front of the MTED Board of Directors, staff will work with the company to do so. A formal presentation of the project to the TED Board of Directors is made. Agendas for these meetings are published 48 hours in advance of the meetings. These are public board meetings. If the TED Board of Directors recommends that the project move forward, it can then move forward to the Council of Commissioners. Staff will then place recommendations from the TED Board on the council agenda. The Council of Commissioners can vote on whether or not to enter into an agreement. If the agreement passes, the Council of Commissioners allows the company to enter a due diligence period where they must satisfy the requirements of the agreement in order to use their option to purchase land. If the company purchases the land and uses their option, a resolution of sale is brought before the Council of Commissioners to be passed before the sale is final. The company still must satisfy the purchase agreement. There is always a clawback provision in our agreements to get the land back if conditions were not satisfied. Number 17, excuse me, what will the public process be going forward? The next step moving forward is for the company to either exercise their option to purchase the land or ask for an extension of their due diligence period. In either case, the next step in the process will be placed on the council agenda for consideration.
Okay.
So, that goes through and answers those questions, you know, as Butte Silver Bow staff went and answered them. And then, like I said, if there's any follow-up or anything, Friday, there's a meeting and a representative from SABE will be there to answer any questions as well. So, any follow-up, Ms. Bordoun?
I just have a follow-up on the noise ordinance at the Montana Connections. And I would refer people to some of the noise ordinances that they've found necessary for data centers are specific to those kinds of vibrations that data centers emit and also are in response to the 24/7 nature of the noise. And so you may need to look at that ordinance to see if it's responsive to time of the day and then the types of noise that data centers put out. And I guess that's where, because Montana Connections has not considered a data center before, I would question if that noise ordinance is sufficient for that type of industry.
Okay. Is there any other questions that the Commissioners have for Ms. Bordoun? Commissioner Callahan?
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. Ms. Bordoun, I just want to thank you. I did attend your meeting up at Montana Tech a couple of weeks ago and you brought a lot of information that we weren't aware of and then agreeing to come and talk to us tonight and ask these questions and get them answered. We appreciate all of your time and helping inform the community of what we're getting into.
Absolutely. I very much believe in Butte Silver Bow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you, Ms. Bordoun, for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right. All right, moving on to Section 2 Communications. One, Communication 2025-249. Patty and Chris Solmanson requesting Council of Commissioners approval to purchase a portion of the land owned by Butte Silver Bow, which is adjacent to their property located at 17 Tullamore Street. We'll continue to hold this in abeyance as it is before the Land Sales Committee and we will await their recommendation. Before I go to number two, which is Communication 2025-460, I'm going to just rearrange the agenda for a minute because Communication number 11, no, 14, which is Communication I'm just going to address that one first because this is the newest communication that we have regarding this case. Communication 2025-542. Will O'Connor, Land Records Coordinator, requesting Council of Commissioners to deny Council Communication 2024-460. A request from Steve Maloney to purchase a portion of the city-county-owned property, portion of tax parcel number 0001892400. As this body will recall, I did receive an email from Will last, Mr. O'Connor, asking that we hold this communication in abeyance because Mr. Maloney was currently out of town and that he was planning on being here tonight to speak on it. Mr. O'Connor, has there been any update? I don't believe Mr. Maloney is here.
Chairman Morgan, members of council, there is no update. I haven't talked to Mr. Maloney since last week either, and he's not in attendance.
Okay. All right. Mr. Maloney, I don't see you in the audience, but I will just ask for it. So along those lines, I don't know what the council would like to recommend. Commissioner Thatcher?
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. Seeing as this has been on the agenda for quite some time and Mr. O'Connor did want to give Mr. Maloney the opportunity to speak on this, how I understood it last week is he was maybe struggling to get home from Ireland based on everything going on with the airlines and the federal government. So I think just in the spirit of doing the right thing, probably I think that we should continue to hold this in abeyance.
Is that in the form of a motion? Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded to hold this communication in abeyance. Is there anything on the question? On the question, I would just state that I haven't received anything to state that he wasn't going to be here tonight and the communication that he sent me yet last week, he was going to be here this week. So I don't know if he'll be back or what the process is. So there is a motion made and seconded on the floor. Is there anything else on the question? Commissioner O'Leary?
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. I guess just a procedural question. We could, this is going to get held in committee the whole correct, so we would have to address this in two weeks? Or could we address this on next week's? We could segregate it out of the committee the whole?
Commissioner O'Leary, yes, you could segregate it out of the committee the whole and take action on it next week if the council chooses to do so. Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded. If there's nothing more on the question, would everyone please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Seven yeas, zero nay.
Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to Communication 2025-460, number two. Steve Maloney, Butte resident, requesting Council of Commissioners to purchase a portion of tax parcel 001892400 pending a survey to be completed and a correction deed. We would just continue to hold that in abeyance pending the result of the other communication. Number three, Communication 2025-494. Zach Osborne, Butte Silver Bow Fire Chief, requesting Council of Commissioners authorization to schedule a public hearing for November 5th, 2025, for the purpose of amending the fiscal year 2526 fire department budget to allow for increased expenditures of unanticipated revenue. Commissioner Thatcher?
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to place Communication number 2025-494 on file.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded to place Communication 25494 on file. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Okay, would anyone like to change their vote? Oh, Ms. Shea, sorry, you got to clock in. Okay, would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Nine yeas, zero nay.
Thank you. Motion passes. Number four, Communication 25500. Angie Mulliken, Public Works Budget Manager, requesting Council of Commissioners to reschedule a bid opening on November 5th, 2025, for the Silver Lake Industrial Water System Improvements Project. This bid opening has been moved to November 19th, so we'll continue to hold this in abeyance. Number five, Communication 25503. Angie Mulliken, Public Works Budget Manager, requesting Council of Commissioners authorization to schedule a public hearing for November 5th, 2025, for sole sourcing the Sulzer replacement parts through Falcon Environmental, the only dealer in Montana. Commissioner Thatcher?
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to place Communication number 2025-503 on file.
Thank you. There's been a motion made and seconded to place Communication 2025-503 on file. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Nine yeas, zero nay.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Number six, Communication 2025-504. Angie Mulliken, Public Works Budget Manager, requesting Council of Commissioners authorization to schedule a public hearing for November 5th, 2025, for the purpose of soliciting comments on the unanticipated revenue from the Department of Natural Resources and Conservation from the USDA Cooperative Forestry Program to plant trees throughout Skyline Park. Commissioner Thatcher?
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. I'd like to make a motion to place Communication number 2025-504 on file.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded to place Communication 25504 on file. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Nine yeas, zero nay.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Seven, Communication 2025-518. Karen Burns, Community Development Director, requesting Council of Commissioners authorization to schedule a presentation on November 12th, 2025, regarding responses to the RFP for the purchase of 305 West Mercury and referral back to the Review Committee for recommendations. As you will recall, we referred those back to the committee. This communication could be placed on file. Commissioner Thatcher?
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. Just please explain this then to me. Two now, because wouldn't, so we referred it back under the presentations, but it's still the same communication number. So if we placed it on file, does the original motion of the, to refer the same communication number back to Director Burns's office stand? Or should I just make the exact same motion on this one? I'm confused.
So your original motion did not include Communication number 25-518? It just simply referred the proposals to the Community Development Department? And so this is addressing the communication, hence why I wanted to address the communication later in the agenda to put it to bed because you can't, you're not taking action on it in the presentation because it's the communication that's there. Does that help clarify?
Yeah.
Commissioner Thatcher?
Perfect, okay. All right, then at this time, I would like to make a motion to place Communication number 2025-518 on file.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded to place Communication 25518 on file. Is there anything on the question? Would anyone like to change their, or would everyone please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Nine yeas, zero nay.
Thank you. Motion passes. Number eight, Communication 25519. Jessica LeProus, Law Enforcement Budget Analyst, requesting Council of Commissioners authorization to schedule a public hearing for November 5th, 25, for the purpose of amending the fiscal year 2526 budget to allow for increased expenditures of unanticipated revenue for the gas masks provided to the Butte Silver Bow Law Enforcement Agency and it's a donation from Town Pump. This public hearing was moved to November 19th, so we'll continue to hold this in abeyance. Number nine, Communication 25520. William F. McGinnis, 807 North Montana Street, Butte, Montana, requesting Council of Commissioners authorization to purchase property on parcel number 0001905650. We'll continue to hold this in abeyance pending a report back from the Land Sales Committee. Number 10, on the question, Commissioner Thatcher?
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. Just to refresh my memory, I think we talked that this one was discussed or just kind of given to us. Have we even made the referral to land sales? Or is that something that we'll have to segregate out and make that recommendation?
Commissioner Thatcher, I'd have to look at the agenda last week to see what the recommendation was. I thought it was already to refer to the Land Sales Committee.
You're correct. It's number three. I just wanted to make sure I don't remember this from last week, so just making sure. Thank you.
You bet. Okay, so we'll continue to hold this in abeyance pending the recommendation from the Land Sales Committee. Number 10, Communication 2025-535. Angie Mulliken, Public Works Budget Manager, requesting Council of Commissioners authorization to schedule a public hearing for November 19th, 25, for the purpose of soliciting comments on the unanticipated revenue from the Department of Natural Resources and Conservation, DNRC. We'll continue to hold this in abeyance pending the November 19th public hearing. Number 11, Communication 25536. Mark Neary, Public Works Director, requesting Council of Commissioners to schedule a bid opening on November 19th, 25, for one new skip loader for the Butte Silver Bow Public Works Roads Department. We'll continue to hold this in abeyance pending the bid opening on November 19th. Number 12, Communication 25537. Mark Neary, Public Works Director, requesting Council of Commissioners to schedule a bid opening on November 19th, 25, for one new five, I'm thinking that's yard, right? Axle Dump Truck for Butte Silver Bow Public Works Department. We'll continue to hold that in abeyance pending the November 19th bid opening. Number 13, Communication 25538. Mark Neary, Public Works Director, requesting Council of Commissioners to schedule a bid opening on November 19th, 25, for one new three-to-four cubic yard wheel loader for the Butte Silver Bow Public Works Department. We'll continue to hold this in abeyance as well pending the November 19th date. 14, we've already taken action on. Number 15, Communication 25545. Sean Frederickson, Parks and Recreation Director, requesting Council of Commissioners authorization to schedule a presentation on November 19th, 25, to provide an update on current operations and projects related to parks, Highland View Golf Course and Ridgewaters Park. We'll continue to hold that in abeyance for November 19th. You might want to bring popcorn for the 19th because there's a lot going on. Number 16, Communication 25546. Sarah Bordoun, Butte, Montana, requesting Council of Commissioners to answer some questions from the October 16th, 2025 Public Forum Beyond the Boom. from the October 16th, 2025 Public Forum Beyond the Boom on November 12th, 2025, regarding the impacts of data center that may be coming to Butte, Montana. I would recommend that we hold this in abeyance, but I would open this up to the floor if there's any change on that. Okay, so we'll continue to hold this communication in abeyance for a later time. Next item on tonight's agenda is any public comment on any public matter not on tonight's agenda. R. Edward Bandarob, take your time. Looks like the microphone is on. Please state your name and address for the record.
R. Bandarob, 26th Street, Grand Avenue, Butte, Montana. Probably comment on any matter not on the agenda. Just in case you didn't read your email, attention residents of the greater Butte Silver Bow community. Are you willing to advocate for a government of the people, by the people, and for the people? The issue of neighborhood community improvement councils and a greater Butte Silver Bow community council is to be on next Monday's Local Government Study Commission agenda. We, the Greeley Neighborhood Community Development Corporation, Inc., Board, and the Triad of Concerned Citizens are trying to get a mandated, recognized, official channel and/or procedure for public oversight, consensual public recommendations, and coordination of neighborhood improvement projects included into the Butte Silver Bow charter, instead of having two $50,000 studies sitting on the shelf. This is something I would think your constituents would be interested in and willing to support. Please note the word mandated. It's only been 14 years since we've been trying. In that, our proposal would drastically change the duties, powers, and responsibilities of the Council of Commissioners, Commissioners. I would think you would just might want to attend the Local Government Study Committee Commission's meeting and express your opinions. If you would like additional information or details about what we have proposed for your information and/or to share with interested individuals in your district, please let me know. You have my Greeley email, email address, and I will send you what we have proposed to date. The Local Government Study Commission meeting is in this council chambers and starts at 5:00 on Monday, November 17th. Please let me know if you would like more information. But I want to add a PS to this. In that, the Montana State Supreme Court ruled in 2023, 2024, that the public has the right to participate in the discussions and the decision-making process discussions before the final vote. If you cannot make the 5:00 time, they just might let you speak when they get to the discussion period. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bandarob. Is there any other member of the public that would like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Oh, on the question, Commissioner Callahan?
I just got a request from Chief Executive Gallagher. Last week, we kind of discussed the window and the wind blowing through, and you said that the top windows come in the wrong size, and they probably have to be custom-made. Poor Ms. Thatcher's been sitting here shivering for an hour and a half. Is there any chance we can have that contractor do a little better job sealing that up? Because it could be months before we get those windows in. Thank you.
Wear a jacket. All right, motion to adjourn. All in favor? Pose.